Okay, good evening, everyone. I call the city council meeting for Tuesday, November 21st, 23, 2023 to order. This time we'll have an amulet of silence for whatever you'd like to think about. Thank you. Okay, so, Ms. Lynch, if you would join me, please. Okay, raise your right hand. I say your name.
I, Michelle Lynch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of Seventh Ward Alderwoman.
Discharge the duties of the Seventh Ward Alderwoman.
Of the City of Davenport.
Of the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please take your seat. Very good, thank you. If you would please, everyone, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for tonight. Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
Anne Ortiz. Nine present, Your Honor. Very good, thank you, sir. So again, good evening, welcome, as we begin the meeting of the city council. I'd like to again welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For the folks in here, if you'd be kind enough to put your cellphone on silent or turn it off, simply doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium at the appropriate time. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as one body and not to any individual. Same with staff, not to any one individual. We'll be respectful of you, please be respectful of us, and of course, only warning right now, please don't disturb as people are talking. We want to hear from everybody, so please no cheering, yelling, screaming, etc. Thank you. All right. Will an alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for November 8th? Motion is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Merritt, city administrator update tonight.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Will an alderman move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for November 15th? Motion is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Okay, we have five appointments and one proclamation. We'll do the appointments, I'll read them all, and then ask for a motion to accept. Combined Construction Code Board of Appeals and Review, Tim Kohler and Andrew Dasso are both reappointments. Civil Rights Commission, Charlene Upchurch-Taylor, Frank Holly, and Angela Fritz Reyes are all reappointments. I'll accept a motion to approve. Motion in the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. We have one proclamation, I'll read. Whereas the City of Davenport, Iowa celebrates our local small businesses and the many contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 33 million small businesses in the United States which are responsible for 62.7% of the net new jobs created since 1995 and employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector, and whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent in a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing locals' goods and services, and whereas 72% of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday 2022 made them want to shop and dine at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants all year long, and whereas Davenport, Iowa supports our local small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. So now, therefore, we, Mike Matson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday in Davenport and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. I'd accept a motion to approve the proclamation. Motion is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Thank you very much, and we'll make sure that gets to the appropriate person. All right. Next, we have one presentation, municipality equality index, and I think, yes, Mr. Scott, please, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, on this wonderful Tuesday evening. The Human Rights Campaign, HRC, was founded in 1980, and it is the largest advocacy organization in this country for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning youth, LGBTQ. Over a decade ago or so, they created what they call the Municipal Equality Index, where they rate and score cities across the country on their laws, policies, and services to the LGBTQ community. And we've been participating for many years, and in 2023, we did receive a score of 100 points, their top score, based on their 25 data points that they're looking at, based on our laws, policies, and services provided to the LGBTQ community. One thing that I really enjoy about this particular project that HRC does, it allows cities and communities across the U.S. to be pragmatic and to be proactive when it comes to the things that they're looking to score. For example, back in 2020, one of the items that is scored is transgender-inclusive healthcare benefits. At the time, our plan mentioned transgender-inclusive healthcare benefits, but didn't have any meat behind it, or actually language that allowed for that to happen. So in working with not only our professional benefit staff, HR personnel, city administration, city legal, the plan administrator for our health plan, and HRC, we were able to get that plan bolstered, and in 2021, we received those points, and our employees potentially now have access to something that could be really beneficial to them. So I like the pragmatality and the proactivity that we can do when these come out. We can see where we can actually have an impact, and that's important. In the state of Iowa, nine cities are currently scored every year. We share a 100-point score with, I believe it's Cedar Rapids, Dubuque, Iowa City, and West Des Moines. So we're in good company. But the end of the day, the 100 points, the score on paper is important, but what's really important is us as human beings, as individuals, showing respect to every single person we come into contact with. It's neighbors being neighborly. It's business owners opening their doors and enthusiastically welcoming everyone that comes through, and then it's also strangers on the street greeting other strangers, at least with a smile, but potentially with a hello. That's where we will get the most traction. So I thank my team in HR, I thank city legal, I thank city administration, and of course, I thank mayor and council for your continued support as we continue to do the good work for everyone that's needed. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Scott, for your leadership and the staff for your leadership to get this done. All right, petitions and communications. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of things tonight. There's been a wonderful project underway in two of our libraries, one at the Eastern Library and one at the Fairmont Library, and this is tremendous enhancement of our children's areas, new learning activities, new interactive activities. A lot of this was funded by contributions from individuals and organizations, and it is now in place, and there is a grand opening on Saturday, December 2nd. It's at the Eastern Library, it's a grand opening at 9:30 a.m., and then at the Fairmont Library, it is at 2:15 p.m. So please, join us for one of both of those. This has been a wonderful, it's going to be a wonderful enhancement for childhood learning. It's right here in Davenport in two libraries, so if you can join us on December 2nd, that would be fantastic. 9:30 at Eastern, 2:15 at Fairmont. And the other reminder, we're going to, we will not be here next week, so Cops and Coco, so we won't, kids won't be jazzed up on caffeine like Cops and coffee, but it'll be sugar. Cops and Coco, December 5th, and it's going to be 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Vandemere Conservatory, so a chance to see the wonderful decorations there in the holiday and to have Coco with your cops. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Anyone else? Very good. I'll just add again, based on the proclamation this coming Saturday, please support all the local small businesses, especially in Davenport. Okay, moving on to individual items approval on the discussion agenda. The first item is a third consideration of an ordinance for case REZ 23-05 being the request of Anthony Properties to rezon the 10.17 acres of Lot 1 of Phoenix Center 6th Edition in the 5,600 block of Tremont Avenue from light industrial to multifamily. Planning and zoning commission recommends denial, so there'll be eight votes needed to approve this for passage. Is there any public with comment?
Gilmore, 11th and 6th Ward, welcome. Although I supported passage on the first five readings, I oppose this rezoning. May I explain? The findings by PNZ, I'll name four of them, the proposed rezoning to RMF multifamily residential is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and adapted use policies. Number two, the introduction of a residential use in an industrial area is not compatible with zoning and land uses or character of nearby property. Number three, the proposed amendment may have factors that could impact public health, safety, and welfare of the city. Number four, rezoning the property to RMF does create nonconformities. Now, in addition, I just read one thing out of the green sheet, I'm sure that you've all read it, so this is just a review. Access to the property through a 40-foot strip of land between two lots containing storage units due to the inability to construct a public street meeting the width requirements in the City of Davenport subdivision code, further subdivision of the subject property to facilitate development of single-family, single-family detached, two-family, or townhouses would not be feasible. So there'll have to be another variance and suspension, whatever. It is staff's opinion that the proposed amendment is not compatible with the zoning of nearby properties. It's the staff's opinion that the proposed amendment is not compatible with the established neighborhood character. It's the staff's opinion that the proposed zoning map amendment may have factors that could impact public health, safety, and welfare to the city. So in conclusion, I don't have a horse in this race. I don't know the seller or the buyer. It's not my ward. But I think following the not following the recommendation of both PNZ and city staff may be setting a precedent that you might find could come back and bite you, you know where. I personally see this as being akin to suspending the rules because someone wants to ban or simply doesn't want to play by the rules. My recommendation would be to vote no on this rezoning. I believe there are way too many issues that have not been addressed. I'm not saying this is a bad project. I think it's a great project. It's just the wrong location. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Next, please.
James Woods, 8th Ward. All you ever seen on TV, for at least the candidates and the current aldermen, that were on the news, that answered the questionnaires, we have a housing problem. Yes, it was pointed out last week that it's not affordable housing, but you don't know everybody's walks and means. Somebody could have just gotten a promotion and could be a supervisor. That person can move from affordable housing into one of these market units, which means you just opened up affordable housing. I think you guys should approve this because we have 6,600 houses, or units, that we are short in the City of Davenport. This could open up benefits for people moving from one life of walk to the next. Everybody doesn't go automatically from rent to ownership. This is a step in the right direction, and it gives us more housing, which is what we need in the City of Davenport limits.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one from public, will an alderman please move consideration, third consideration?
Second.
Okay, motion is a second. Any discussion from alderfolks? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I would like, we've talked about this before in some of the previous readings, but we went through the developer and staff and myself, along with talking with Alderman Gripp, we went through that report, we identified every issue that was raised, and we worked through them all. Staff has, along with the developer, we've come up with some very brief conditions that I will raise a little later for a vote, but every one of those were addressed by staff, by the developer, and we've reached agreement that it will work, including the access road will work. So I would just like to say that. I will hold off for other folks to speak before I offer the amendments, the conditions, before we vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I just want to take an opportunity to thank the folks that I actually went out and had to get my own information, not to say that everybody's information wasn't good, it's just that I wanted to put my eyes on it, and I had a really nice time with the young lady that oversees the property that's already there, and she explained a lot of things to me, and it just was a little confusing when it came from the seller's real estate agent. It really threw me off, so I want to say thank you, and I will be voting for it.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank Alderwoman Lee and Alderman Gripp for working through this, but I'm kind of confused. Does staff still, after having this discussion, do they still recommend denial?
Good evening, Matt Werrich with Development and Neighborhood Services. So staff still stands behind the recommendation to the Plan and Zone Commission to recommend denial for this application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll. I apologize. Ms. Lee, I know, yep, I apologize. Ms. Lee, would you like to add something?
The amendment.
Please. Please.
Okay, thank you very much. We read these last week, I'll read them into the record again. These are the proposed conditions that were worked out to make this a feasible and recommended alternative proposal. So the first one is upon development, a buffer yard of no less than 15 feet in width shall be provided along the north and east property lines. The buffer yard shall meet design standards as outlined in Section 17, Point 11, Point 080C of the Davenport Municipal Code. The second condition, the developer shall obtain approval from all utilities to install signage within the designated utility easement. Three, the developer shall install signage near the driveway entrance to the development. The signage shall be a minimum of six square feet and illuminated. So those are the conditions that the developer and the city agreed to as it relates to this proposal. So I move that those conditions be amended.
So you're making a motion for these things to be added to amend it? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is a second. Brian, please call the roll on the amendment to add these conditions. Condon.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Anne McGinnis.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. The amendment is now part of the consideration and ordinance. Okay, now, anybody else? Very good. Brian, please call the roll on the third consideration with the amendment. Dickman.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Dunn.
No.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Anne Lee.
Yes.
Looks like eight yeses and one no, Your Honor. Very good. The ordinance is adopted. The next item, number two, is a motion approving a waiver of sidewalk installation for Birdie's Nest Daycare at 2627 Hickory Grove Road, and that said waiver is valid as long as certain conditions remain in effect. Is there any public, staff recommends denial. Is there any public with comment? And I see people moving around, so I'll wait and see if someone comes up here. Okay. And just remember, name, order, address, love to know if you're not from here, and So we're doing one at a time, folks, just so you know that. Okay, and if you're staying in, okay, yeah.
Hello, dear City of Davenport, I am writing you today to discuss a motion that will be decided tonight at the meeting. My name is Nureya Salzberger, and I am the owner and director of Birdie's Nest Childcare Center located at 2627 Hickory Grove Road in Davenport. I believe this is the second ward. We provide childcare and preschool services to over 150 children here in Davenport. We are a quality-rated center that partners with the Davenport Community School District for free four-year-old preschool. We currently have over 500 children on a waiting list to enroll in our center. We have recently acquired state grant funds to build an addition to our building. The funding is very tight and is being used to build a new gym and two new classrooms. This will expand our services and allow for more children to have quality care in our area. As most of you are probably already aware, childcare is truly in a crisis. Our funding is tight, our staffing is tough, and the entire childcare world is struggling right now. Tonight, you will vote to decide on approving or denying a waiver of sidewalk installation. We are asking for you to please approve this waiver. We do not think it is in the best interest of our children and the program we serve to install these sidewalks. There are several reasons why we would like this waiver approved. Number one, it is not safe to have a sidewalk wrap around our center. This would allow the public to stand on the sidewalk and have view of all of our children during their outside time. In years past, the centers had to call the police for people trying to come and record the children while they are playing, for people urinating on our playground, and for people exposing their private parts to staff and children who are on the playground. If we created a sidewalk, this would allow more people access to be closer to the children that we work so hard to keep safe every day. This also allows for people to walk very close to our playground and outdoor areas. This creates issues with trash and unsafe objects being thrown over our fences. We have had people throw over bottles of liquor, used condoms, and drug pipes. Another reason to approve this motion is to keep the project's budget in line. If we have to add sidewalks to our entire property, which is almost three acres, we would not be able to stay within our budget and finish the project as it was approved by the State of Iowa. The State of Iowa is funding this project because they understand the dire need for additional childcare slots. If this motion is not approved and we have to spend an additional $30,000 to $40,000 on sidewalks, we will have to stop all other projects for this addition. This will have a negative impact on our community and on the children that we are serving. If we have to cover this cost, we will not be able to complete our large gross motor gym. The gym will help us take in more school-aged children over this coming summer. Last summer, we had to waitlist more than 30 children. We will have to pay to remove a very large tree, estimated between $5,000 to $10,000. We will have to pay to purchase new shade structures for our infant and toddler playground, which is between $20,000 to $30,000, and we will have to pay for the upkeep of plowing and salting all of the sidewalks throughout the three acres. Our entire property runs roughly three acres, and this will be extremely expensive. The sidewalk around the property just doesn't make good common sense. We would have to weave the sidewalk around current utility poles. This will not look pleasing aesthetically. If we are required to put in this sidewalk, we will have to remove a very old and strong tree that currently provides natural shade to our entire infant and toddler playground. Shading is a required component by the Iowa Health and Human Services. I am begging you to please approve this waiver so that we can get the biggest impact for the money that we have left. Put this money into the kids and into their needs. This sidewalk will be useless, and it will create safety concerns for the smallest children in our area. There isn't a lot of funding available for childcare centers right now, and we totally understand that. I know that if the city or if the state could do more or give more funding for our children, that you absolutely would, but this is one way that you can give back. This can help save our budget and still give the kids we serve the best possible environment. Please make this possible for us. I am asking for you to please vote to approve the waiver of sidewalk installation for Birdie's Nest Childcare Center and preschool. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Debbie Thornburg. I live in, at 402 West Sheridan Drive in Eldridge, but I grew up in central Davenport, and I raised my children in the west end of Davenport, and my daughter owns a daycare center in the second ward. So I just wanted to say a few things. I want to keep this brief. She did a great job of saying, you know, the most important things, but I just wanted to add a couple of little things. First of all, I'm really thankful for this process. I'm thankful that we have a council that we can come before and we can give our point of view, and that we have everyday, rational, intelligent people who can look at it from both sides. I know that it's your job to look out for the interest of the city and to look out for the interest of the citizens, and that's what we're asking you to do. We had a couple of aldermen stop by the center this afternoon and look at the area, and we really appreciate that, because when you look at it, it makes sense. Nobody needs to be walking on a sidewalk along whatever road that is. What's the road? Hickory Grove. Nobody needs to be walking along that street. We can't even have a mailbox on that street because it's been knocked down by cars at least five times. It's not safe for anybody to be walking on a sidewalk on Central Park. I drove by there today. There is a little sidewalk in front of the gas station, right on the corner. I'm not really sure why, I've never seen it used. There is a sidewalk farther down. Cobham just made a parking lot down there so that their employees, because they're on the opposite side of the street, they park over there. They need to walk down that small sidewalk that they have. It's recessed back very far. It's safe. They need it there. They need to walk across, and then they cross there to get to their place of work. That makes sense. There's no other business along Hickory Grove that has sidewalks, because, number one, I already said, we already said, it's not safe. Okay. My daughter did mention that we have state grants for this addition. It's a wonderful addition. But I also wanted to mention that they match those funds, and so it's not like, ooh, we're getting this free building from the state. They match those funds, and we are a for-profit center. We are not, we pay our taxes. Trust me, we pay our taxes, a lot of taxes. And, you know, we opened that center from the ground with nothing. My daughter was a teacher for the City of, for the Davenport School District for five years. I have six grandkids, all under the age of 10. We struggled to get good childcare, and that's why she quit her job of teaching, and we, her husband, me, and my daughter, we took out our 401Ks, we took our life savings, we put everything we had into starting that center, and we're very, very proud of it. It's very, very quality care, which you probably heard. I know that you guys got flooded with a lot of emails today from the parents of a lot of the kids, because they do care. This is an important issue. This means a lot to us, and I'm going to wrap up, but I just want to thank you for your time and attention today, and I just, I thank you, and I know you guys will do the right thing. Honestly, I wish you all would have came out and looked at the property, because it's just common sense. There's no need for a sidewalk in that area. So thank you for your attention and for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm John Clark. I am the builder for Birdie's Nest, and I just want to talk about the diagram. There seems to be a little bit of confusion. With the builder's notes to obtain the permit, it is only the east and west side of the property, and there's also two parcels there, and we're only building one parcel. So essentially, from the sand lot all the way to, almost to the driveway, is part of the second parcel that's not under construction. So, and then Hickory Grove Road was not part of the building notes whatsoever, so this is now coming before you with an addition of several hundred feet of sidewalk. So I just, I want to clarify what that diagram looks like and what was told to us when we to us when we obtained the building permit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing.
Hello. My name's Diana Gilling. I currently work at the daycare center. I've been there for about a year. I grew up in Davenport, primarily lived here all my life. All I want to say is that if you put a sidewalk out there, you're asking for a problem. There is, like my sister said, the traffic through there is unbelievably fast. There's even a sign up there, one of the electronic ones that tells people how fast they're going. Sometimes when I pull into the driveway, I don't feel safe with how fast people are coming behind me. If you put a sidewalk there, I really believe that you're going to have, you could have an accident, someone could get run over. It's just not a, a really good idea. Security for those children is paramount. These people are doing God's work, as far as I'm concerned. They're taking care of other people's children, and they treat them like their own. So if they come up and say to you that this is not a good idea, it truly is not a good idea. If you take away the, and what you basically are going to do, if you make them put in this sidewalk, and they'll do that because that's the kind of people that they are, they do the right thing, you're going to take away from the project that they're working on, which is a gym, and the kids are so excited about it. You're going to take away the flooring, you're going to take away all kinds of different things that they're going to be able to do with that $30,000, $40,000. It's just not, I understand that you want the city to look beautiful, and it is an empty stretch of roadway there, which is why they use it as a freeway, but we can do that with bushes and trees and things like that. We can beautify that out there if that's, if that's what you're looking for. That's it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Will an alderperson please move the motion? Motion is second, any discussion? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Yes, could we have staff come up planning and talk about the rationale for acquiring this and, and, and our city plans towards sidewalks and how that might have changed?
Right, Chad, City Engineer. As we review site plans that are submitted to the city, we look at the pedestrian connectivity in the area. One of the priorities of council is improving that throughout the cities. We, we try to make that part of that review process.
And to the right is residential area, is that correct?
That's correct. The, the small inset photo, the blue lines represent existing sidewalk in the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess, I don't know, Brian, if you're appropriate staffer or not, I got a quick question about, um, is this kind of an all or none? You know, so this waiver request, um, is this something that we could potentially amend? Reason why I ask, I grew up on North Pine, just two blocks, um, from this property. Rode my bike up to Hickory Grove, walked, you know, all that many, many times throughout, throughout the years. To me, I mean, maybe a sidewalk along Columbia doesn't make as much sense, and that's a pretty darn big stretch, but maybe North Pine, you know, because everybody to the north, if they are walking, walking up. So my long-winded question is, is there an ability to amend this somehow if we somehow decided, yeah, they need a sidewalk along North Pine, but not along West Columbia?
Yes, staff's recommendation was for installation all the way around the property. It is the council's choice if they want to follow that recommendation, modify the recommendation or deny it. It could be a partial waiver or full waiver.
Okay. Thank you. And so maybe just for tonight, I'm kind of thinking about maybe whether we table this tonight and kind of have a little discussion. Um, I'm going to hold off on making any of that motion for a hot second. Could I have Ms. Salzbriner pop up here real quick? I got a couple of other questions. I apologize, I haven't been, been over there since, uh, since this came forward, but it was a couple of months ago. There's no privacy fence around your property there on Columbia and North Pine, correct?
We have, um, we have fencing, and then we do privacy slats around kind of where you see the red dipping around. That is where our, so if you look, there's like a little rectangle that used to be a sand pit when Harvest Bible operated it. We renovated that, and that is our whole play area. So is that Columbia? Yeah, so that actually does have privacy, they're privacy slats. So someone who's just driving past wouldn't really be able to see in, but if you were standing on the sidewalk, you could see all of the children.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm done now. I'll maybe come back as I'm noodling this. I'm maybe going to make a motion to table, but I'll wait to see if anybody else has comments.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. I'm one of the alderpeople that went over there this afternoon and looked at that site, went all the way up and down Hickory Grove to look at the context for the site, as well as stopped in and talked to the owners and to, to learn a little bit more about theirs. There's, the entire area is fenced, except for, of course, the parking lot. So all the way around, to answer your question, their privacy slats are more towards Hickory Grove and Lower Columbia. If you look at the top on North Pine, that has multiple phone poles and light poles, well, phone poles in there to where there really isn't room to put sidewalk between there and the road because the phone poles go between the fence and the, the road itself. The green part is where they use for soccer and, you know, outdoor play type thing. The tree that she's talking about is if you go just, there's a little blurry spot just down of the sand pit. That's the big tree. Because of the way the fences and the road along there, if they were to put a sidewalk along there, they would have to remove the tree, which is what she was talking about. That tree does provide shade for where they're, um, I think you said it was the toddler and infant play area, and so it would cost like about $10,000. It's a, it's a mature tree to take down that tree. Then they would have to replace the shade with a shade structure, which would be about $30,000. They already have one, so they know about what it would cost. The sidewalk itself, you know, going back, I, I like your idea, you know, there's, to, to look at it some more. If you go that direction on Hickory Grove, you, there's a printing company, and then there's a built, that's way in the back with a big parking lot in front of it. And then there's another building that's completely surrounded by fencing right up to, um, the grass that is, also has not razor wire, but barbed wire on the top of it all the way around that building. So there's not anyone going to be walking up that direction. What she was talking about down this direction is a car repair place, and they do have a sidewalk there. If, if you look at the inset, all the residential areas are covered by sidewalks. So getting within any of those residential areas will work. Looking at the Cobham, yeah, I agree that the parking area that they put in, they need a sidewalk along the parking area so that they have a place to wait so that they can cross the street to get to where they're working. So I, I agree with having a sidewalk there. I'm just not sure about any of that providing unnecessary connectivity, conduct, connectivity, I can say it, connectivity for pedestrians that would be going anywhere, you know, from A to B. So that's what I saw when I went and looked at the context as well as that site. And right now, they, they do have a concrete floor. They are looking to put in like a basketball-type floor, but if they spend money on a sidewalk versus, um, versus putting in money towards the facility itself, I see childcare as one of our key infrastructure lag, gaps for our, for Davenport. And so I want to make sure, and if she has 585 people on the waiting list, um, I want to make sure that we can do everything we can to support childcare. That's not, she says it's for profit, but I don't think there's a great profit, you know, high price, it's not a high margin in childcare. So I want to do everything we can to, um, to support childcare in our area. And this is a lovely facility. It's, it looks like it's well-run. The new building is looking great. So that's what I'd like to say. If there's a question about, you know, let's look at it further so that everyone is a little more comfortable on what's going on out there, perhaps taking a chance, I would agree with tabling this.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I was just going to say the same thing. If you had questions about tabling this, I will be there for you, and I want to thank you for taking your time out of your day to spend time with me today, and we didn't walk the property because I don't. So, um, thank you for, but, and when you're up here, where are you at, young lady? Breathe, because you'll be so much more effective. Slow down and tell us what, because I had a really good time today, and let me tell you, don't nobody want to deal with these bad, uh, yeah? So I applaud you. You know what I'm saying? Breathe, we got you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Condon.
Um, sidewalks getting called in is never easy. It's kind of feels like it's one of the most, uh, personal, uh, burdens we can put on people, but just some of the sentiment behind it. It's a, it's a requirement that most all properties hold if, if they don't presently have sidewalks. It's, it's a requirement that, um, the possibility is that they could get called in. And it sounds like we have a business that's a, a great business, providing a service to families, presumably families close to the area. And again, the sentiment is that those families are as deserving of sidewalks as all other parts of town where we require that. And, um, that's a philosophy that follows the, the thought that people are as important as cars, and they all deserve a safe, walkable way to connect within the community. And just because we can't imagine somebody walking in there doesn't mean that there isn't somebody, uh, who isn't trying to, uh, simply walk, and, and certainly a sidewalk is a lot more, uh, safe than, um, negotiating the traffic. So it's just a slightly different lens, uh, to look through. There's a parallel, um, because as you mentioned, um, people doing unsavory things i- i- in the nearby area, in, in the downtown area, we, uh, uh, we, we discuss whether or not somebody might want to put in at-grade improvements because there might be somebody on the sidewalk doing things that, um, that, that they don't want to be next to their windows. And yet, the very fact that there are no windows is what makes that block face such a attractive, uh, target, uh, for people to hang out. So sometimes activating the space with things that will, um, people, allow people to use it on a human scale rather than, uh, just thinking always about automobiles and, and the worst possible outcome is, um, part of the very solution that we're looking for. So, uh, with that, 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 that's kind of, um, where the city is coming from in trying to, uh, provide more sidewalks to, to the community.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderwoman Lynch.
Just real quick, I just had a question. I think it would go to staff. Has anybody said they want more sidewalk space? Have any residents come forward asking for sidewalks to be put in so they could access the other side of the street instead of, oh, that would be the east side of Pine where there's already a sidewalk? Has anybody?
I'm not aware of any requests.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lynch. Um, anybody else before I go back to Alderman Jobchin? Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for a second shot.
Mayor, 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 sorry.
I hear you. Alderman Gribb, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I was hitting the wrong button.
Got it.
Uh, yeah, I won't be too, uh, I won't be too long here. Won't get into a, a speech about walkability and, and building out places for people. My general thoughts on this are similar to what Alderman Jobchin said earlier. I don't think I would support a, the, the whole, um, but I would, uh, be capable and then to discuss kind of a, a plan for, uh, the two parcels. So I'd, I'd be supportive of that if that's what Alderman Jobchin's going to offer up. Over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Again, I apologize to those from Birdie's Nest to make, keep you on the lurch here and apologize to, uh, some of my council members, but I would like to make a motion to table this, uh, just so we can discuss a little bit more feasibility about the waiver. So I make a motion to table the item for one cycle.
One cycle, so just declare because we've had, and there's a second, so everybody knows this goes on the next agenda. Okay, just so everybody knows, because we've had discussions about that, so we're just not going to vote on it if the table's approved tonight, but we will go to next cycle. Okay, so there's a motion, a second for table, there's no discussion after that happens. Brian, please call the roll for tabling this for one cycle. Lee?
Yes.
Dunn? Yes. McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gribb?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Anne Lynch?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. It's tabled for one cycle. So for folks to know, the next, which will be the first of December, it'll be back on, uh, the cycle committee, the whole, and then city council. All right? Now we'll move on to, uh, motion approval, all items on consent. Before I do that, I'm going to go to Alderman Kelly. He is requesting a discussion on one item during consent, so Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I am requesting some discussion on liquor licenses for Tipsy Village LLC, 11 Seventeen Mile Street Outdoor License. So just in general, because the word of tonight has been safety and welfare of neighborhoods, and I believe that safety and welfare of the whole city of Davenport is an issue that, so I've had some concerns about some things that are going on in the East Village, and a lot of the business owners have come to me, and I've been to several different meetings dealing with business owners about activity that's going on and around this facility. So I was wondering if I could table a discussion so I can actually get out and speak with these folks. I don't know if that's possible. So I'm going to you, Brian.
It's illegal. The question is, since it was already voted to go to consent, can we take it off to vote it separately since we voted to go to consent?
Yeah, we, we can take a motion and get it off of consent, and then once it's off of consent, we can.
Vote it separately?
Yep.
Okay, so, very good there. Alderman Kelly, so if you'd like to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion to take.
Take it off and vote it separately. There's a motion. There's a second, okay? Um, all, first, all in favor to take it off. So Brian, please call the roll. Dickman? Sorry. Dickman?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Jobchin?
Yes.
Orte, oh, he's not here. Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Anne Gribb?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Okay, so now it's off. So now I'll entertain a discussion, so I'm going to treat it like a discussion item. That's good, Brian. Yep, okay. Is there any public with comment on Tipsy Village? Seeing none? Will an alderman please move? Motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion from alderfolks?
No.
Okay, I see Alderman Jobchin.
I just making sure that Alderman Kelly's going to make the motion to table, or you want me to do it right now? I make, I make the motion to table this item. One, one cycle.
So there's been a motion to table and a second, so there's no further discussion. So now, Brian, please call the roll for tabling Tipsy's for one cycle. Lynch?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gribb?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Anne Dickman?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. So thank you. Uh, that's, that's been tabled for one cycle, just that particular item. Okay. Anybody else for consent? Very good. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for all items on consent. Condon?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Anne Gribb?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. Consent's approved. Next area is, uh, any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for tonight. Next area, any public with business, again, name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You'll have five minutes. Remember, remember the concern, no disruption. We want to hear from everybody. Please, please understand that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Ezra Sidran. I'm from the third ward. Wow, exciting couple of weeks. Lot of new faces here. I have here the employment contract for somebody who cannot be named. Or maybe I can mention her name. What are the rules this week? Can I mention her name?
No.
Of course not.
Mr. Sedrin, please, Mr. Sedrin, I'm gonna, listen, everybody, I gave you a warning. Be specific to your point, and don't make accusations. So carry on.
I'm making no accusations, Your Honor. This contract is very clear. If she quits, she doesn't get a dime. I filed a Freedom of Information Act request with the city to find out the terms of her golden parachute. The Quad City Times has also filed the FOIA for this information. The city is stonewalling both of us. By the way, anyone see, uh, the Quad City Times opinion piece? It's scathing. However, what I've heard from a number of sources is that her golden parachute is in the range of 1.2 million to $2 million. I can't confirm this, but others I've talked to say it sounds about right. Of course, if the city wasn't stonewalling us, we would have the exact figure. But she's definitely getting a very nice cash payout, so she must not quit, right? She must have been fired. But her contract says, for her to be fired, quote, "Seven Aldermen on the Davenport City Council must vote to terminate the employee at a duly authorized city council meeting, regular or special." And here's the important part, "so long as a related agenda item appears on the posted public agenda." But that never happened. There hasn't been a regular or special city council meeting in which an agenda item of firing she who cannot be named has appeared. So what was it? Was she fired, or did she quit? The city says it was, quote, "an amicable departure." And that's great. I'm happy. There were no hard feelings. She's gone, and she's getting a huge going away present. The only problem is that isn't legal. I understand the rats are fleeing the ship, and they're taking a lot of money with them on their way out the door. But we still have rules here. And the rules say, if she quit, she doesn't get a dime. And if she was fired, you, the city council, has to put it on the public agenda, which you didn't. Amicable departure doesn't mean a thing. You can't have it both ways. This is what a dysfunctional city government looks like. Chaos. Senior staff leaving, and given secret seven-figure golden parachutes while the city is being sued for over $100 million. The city of Davenport will be financially crippled for years because of the incompetence, ineptitude, and corruption of our city government. The citizens of Davenport deserve better from our elected officials.
Thank you. Next, please.
Katie from Davenport. I found something on Facebook, and I've seen it a couple times, um, today, and I just wanted to share it for something to think about. I know a lot of people behind me can relate to this, um, a little bit more than maybe some that are sitting on the council. What if you are a single parent with a child? You work full-time for $14 an hour. You bring home roughly 800 per paycheck bi-weekly. Your bills are 1,000 rent, 150 for electric, electrical, 250 car payment, 150 for car insurance. So let's do the math. You bring home about 1,600 a month, and your bills average about 1,550, give, give and take. You're making it, but barely. This doesn't even include groceries, internet, cable, cell phones, et cetera, nor does it include child tax, tax credit or child support. Now it's a real cold December, and you get a power bill for $600. How do you pay it? To put, put, put it simple, you don't, because you can't. So your power gets shut off. But you know what your lease says. It says you get evicted if your utilities are terminated. So now you're in court crying to a judge who doesn't care, and you have 10 days to get out. Well, you're in luck, because you found somewhere with three days to spare. It's only 650 a month, but to get in, you must pass a background and credit check, which now you can't, because you just got evicted. You've never been a criminal, but even if you could pass, you're looking at 1,300 to move in, after paying the deposit and first month's rent. Time's up. The landlord shows up at 7:00 AM with your s- seven-year-old son and everything you, nope, the landlord shows up at 7:00 AM with the police and changed your locks. So now you're living in your car with your seven-year-old son and everything you need to get by. You tried to get a storage unit, but you don't have a billing address, so they won't sell one to you. So you could only take what would fit in your backseat. You paid a shower at a local truck stop and eat wherever can be cooked in a gas station microwave. Someone sees you and your son living like this and calls CPS. Guess what happens next? They remove your child from your care, as if this isn't devastating enough. You lose your job too, because an employee losing their child reflects poorly on the company. So now you apply for an apartment with a region where the waiting list is three to seven years. And that's low affordable, um, you know, such and ain't stuff. You know, then you go to your Walmart to put in application. When you get back to your car, you see that your back window has been smashed, and someone helped themselves to your belongings. Remember that it is December and really cold. Now you have to dam, now you have damage to your only shelter. You call your cons, car insurance, who says your deductible is 1,000, and they're going to increase your monthly rate since you're now high risk. You call the homeless shelter at the last resort, and of course, all their bids are full, one thing that Davenport deals with on a daily basis. I'll stop there, because I think you get the point. The people we work with every day are these people. We are these people. We are so close to homelessness and don't even realize it. All it takes is one unexpected bill, one fender bender, one layoff, one house buyer, et cetera. Instead of talking trash about people who are poor, homeless, or need assistance, why don't you try to be grateful that you're not in their shoes? Yet. This is about staying humble and being kind. Be thankful for what you have, because we are all struggling in different ways. I just thought that was pretty powerful message, especially before Thanksgiving. Be thankful that you have your families. Be thankful you have a roof over your head. There's three missing because of three, are gone forever from 324 Main Street. It's 177 days. We're at six months. Brian and Daniel and Ryan won't be at their family dinner this year. This is a hard time of year for people that have lost people. I couldn't even imagine if I was Brandon's family having that seat missing because of negligence of a building, of people not taking care of it. Death happens.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Jessica Knoll, second ward. Yeah, I've missed a few meetings, but I didn't want you guys to forget that I'm still here. I still watch. And the level of disrespect shown last week from your employees to certain Alder folks was absolutely ridiculous. My, my nine-year-old behaves better than that. But two weeks ago, tomorrow, something was said to me that a certain Alderman person could not be removed because there was no charges. But it's awful funny, you guys removed a Alderman with no charges and just accusations. No formal complaints, but I guess that's what you get when you drink the Kool-Aid, right? My thing is, is, you know, it's awful funny that the same Alder person sat up here for weeks and weeks. We've all watched it. It's been recorded. And tried to bully other Alder, Alder people. But yet, when he gets bullied, he can't take the heat and disappears. Absolutely craziness. What's always done in the dark will always come into light. So regardless, whatever else is being hidden, you may as well just be truthful with it now, because we will find out. I do want to say, can I say something nice, something nice to your staff over here? It was very nice to see them sit there and be respectful and not call, cut certain Alder people off while they were speaking. That was nice, and I appreciate that. Now you guys all have a good Thanksgiving? Oh, one more thing. The craziest part is, yes, Brandon, Daniel, and Brandon won't be at their Thanksgiving meals with their families this year. But also the craziest part, this last week, and Brandon's family celebrated his birthday. With still no answers. That's crazy. We're going on six months, guys. You guys keep thinking that we're just gonna, that this is all gonna go underneath the rug like the saw over there across the street, but it's not. We're not leaving. We will still continue to be here, and we will still continue to bug you and bother you. But at the end of the day, fair treatment is fair treatment. And to correct that, there was a charge contributing to the delinquency of a minor.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is LaShana Dixon. I still belong to the fifth ward, I think. If not, then I belong to seven. Either way, I, I end up pretty good. Okay, so I still belong to five? That's okay. I was thinking over here. But either way, I win either way. Um, there's something I wanted to talk to you guys about. I believe the date was June 21st, and I'll have to check my records, because they'll be on the website. This is the day I come here and I addressed the council with about Alder men living in Benton Door. And it was, and after that meeting was over, excuse me, my eye. After that meeting was over, I had this Alder person get off the dais and come to me very quickly and ask to speak to me. Um, and he's like, "I need to speak with you." And I said, "Okay, no problem." I was cornered by this person, because they really wanted to make me believe that they living Davenport. Now that I know his past history, I am totally offended, because when I tried to get away from this man, he could not stop talking. I could show you. I could show you. I proved my kids. So now that all this has come to light, I am offended. He wanted to hold me in that corner, and so he made me believe that he was a Davenport resident. And still to this day, it is questionable to me. And you could ask a few people that was here with me on that day and seeing me basically cornered by this person, making me want to believe that he lived in Davenport, giving me all these excuses. And I said, "You know what? Fine. You know what, sir? I ain't got time for this thing. I got a lot of other stuff to do." He kept on talking and talking and talking. Now I'm offended. I'm offended now. I'll play Susie, because back then, it gave me a vibe. But after I really think about it now, yeah. I just want you to let you know, let you know the person that you're holding on your counsel. It's not appreciated. Now, if you need to talk to those people, when I was trying to get away from this person, I could bring a couple to you. Um, one more thing, we show congratulations. And I'm so happy for you. And I can't wait for January 2nd. I know you ready for me to go.
He smiled.
Thank you. Next, please. Ma'am? We'll see. Thank you.
James Woods, eighth ward. Um, last Thursday and then this Monday, yesterday, Davenport North Little League was awarded $100,000 in grants to light up one of our fields. Coming from that neighborhood and their fireworks sponsor, I unfortunately live on this street and I deal with it every day. And what this will actually do is help us spread out the games, which will minimize some of the parking issues we've had in the past, because that's how we ultimately actually met, because we have resident parking and nobody knows how to read. Um, this year, Dan did a very good job on alleviating that, because I kind of told him that if you want a fireworks show, then make sure the parents don't park on our side of the road. So we have parking for our houses. Um, problem is, Musco is estimating it at about $130,000. My question is to everybody except for Alderman Lynch, because she just got on, any Alderman that has any CISP funding left, please reach out to me or Dan. We are not afraid to file an application. If an Alderman wants to help out with this, we're trying to do it. $30,000 is a lot for one Little League to try to raise the funds on, on their own. And we can't, we can't ask for another round of grants until spring. We'd like to get this project going. We've already secured $100,000 of it. There's only $30,000 left. Any little bit will help. So if there's any Alderman that has any CS, CISP funding, you can either reach out to me or Dan himself, Mr. Gosa. One of us will fill out the application, and we'd appreciate it, because it's for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jane Iduex, I'm with the fifth ward. Um, and I, I was here two weeks ago, and um, I noticed the person that I was worried about paying my tax dollars to is absent. And I still want to know how we're moving forward with not paying any more salary to this person who contribute to the delinquency of a minor, na, 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 na. And then somebody else reminded me of something that happened to me two weeks ago after the city council meeting, out there in the public hallway in front of all of these people. And it was somebody that I kind of thought of as a friend, or at least an, a, a per, but what, an acquaintance that I liked and admired and thought that he was doing a really good job, for the most part, on the city council. And I won't mention names, but that person knows who he is. But I was bullied out there in that hallway immediately after the city council meeting. They couldn't run out of this room fast enough to catch me out there by the pillar where I was standing in front of a room full of hallway full of people. This person accosted me and bullied me and yelled at me for something on Facebook that really wasn't even about him so much. And in the same breath on Facebook, I talked about how much I admired him, and how, how great of an Alder man I felt that he was. But that was inappropriate, and I deserve a public apology, because I was publicly berated in that hallway. And not allowed to respond to them, because they just had a like yell at me. Yell at me. And it was shocking to me, because so many times, we had really great conversations over the last few years. We worked on some great project, food insecurity project, you know? I really admired the work that he did in his ward. You know, but all he had to say is, "I put 400 hour volunteer hours." Volunteer hours into the clock? Great, that's great. Put 400 volunteer hours into mentoring somebody else to run for your position, because 10 years is a little long to sit in the same spot. How much time do I got left? I go back to juvenile justice, always. Juvenile justice, always. And, you know, um, let's say the woman in the car, the woman that homeless, became homeless through no fault of her own, so to speak, other than making minimum wage of $14 an hour, which is not a living wage anymore. You know, and what does the city do to try to help housing insecurity? What does the city do to try to help food insecurity? What does the city do to eradicate overuse of drugs and alcohol among our teenagers and among their parents? You know, if a drunk driver or, uh, somebody high on coke, you know, ran, you know, was who was busting that woman's car out, you know, drug, drug hab and alcohol hab would make, go a long way in this city for eradicating issues with juvenile justice, you know? Let's get over historic preservation and make juvenile justice your Valley with, because we haven't done very much for it. Once Valley Shelter Home went away, once the Summit Program went away, once it turned down, uh, uh, the 380 program for housing, for doing a program for youth, because they came to the city council, what, 12, 13 years ago, Mr. Mayor, when the city put a moratorium, has that moratorium ever been lifted for any more youth resident?